Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. Any additions or changes to this evening's agenda, council? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the August 26 council meeting. Approval of the August 23 payroll of $115,769.95. We have approval of a park use permit for the Fairfield October Society noise exemption. We have a resolution of employment in Park and Recreation Department. We'll also be authorizing our city clerk to sign the Farm Services Agency CRP contract, and approval of claims in the amount of $554,409.16, of which above $75,000 are payments to Drish Construction for $89,898.73, and Lang Construction of $172,111.60. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items?
I have a question regarding the park use permit for Fairfield October Society.
Yes.
It says it wants to run all month, October 1st through the 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. playing music from the gazebo. That's kind of a long time.
Halloween music.
Halloween.
So, yeah, we hope that would come up for discussion, so...
Yeah, I would say maybe the week or few days leading up to Halloween may be more appropriate. I don't think that people around downtown would appreciate...
Is there anyone here tonight from the October Society that made the petition? Oh, okay. Would you tell us what's going on?
So...
And introduce yourself, Francesca.
I'm Francesca Greco. So, I'm currently the president of the October Society. Right now, we're sort of working towards becoming a nonprofit. Our main goal is just to bring more autumnal festivities to Fairfield. That includes Halloween, but also just more of a harvest season, if you will. You know, a bunch of the people on the committee also remember when we used to have cornstalks and scarecrows on the square to represent the harvest time. So, we're really just trying to bring that back and make it a little bit more of a deal. Not quite as much as Christmas, of course. As you know, it's a big deal in Fairfield, but that's our main goal. With this music, of course, we do respect the events that are happening on the square during the month of October, so the music will be paused during those times. We've been in discussions with Steve Smith about those kinds of things, and of course, we're looking for approval first before we continue with him. But, you know, we kind of picked 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as sort of just a goal time. Of course, we know that there are some folks on the square who don't like how long the Christmas music runs for. So, that is just something that we're trying to work with. And of course, we would be happy to take any suggestions from you all. If there's something that you would prefer more over those times, then we'd be happy to work with that as well. So, it's kind of up to you guys.
Good. That sounds a lot different.
Yeah.
So, what other types of music might be included?
So, basically, we're not going for really spooky scary Halloween music.
So, monster mash, you know, all day long?
It's just more like 1950s, like classic.
Okay.
Less scary, more just feeling, if that makes sense. Like, I can't quite articulate it right now, but I think you get what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. Now, Councilman Hallie, you're concerned about the broadcast time. Is there a counterproposal?
Sure. How about the 25th through the 31st, which is Friday before Halloween till Halloween as the days? So, maybe a little...
Although now that it's not so much connected to Halloween, it is more of a fall and an autumn kind of a celebration. We might not need to tie it just to Halloween, but...
So, the only concern I think that we might have as a committee about that is we do want to make sure that we have the correct licensing to play the music. And that fee is about $304 annually. So, we do want to make sure that we are, you know, in a sense, getting our money's worth out of it, if you will. Just making sure that the investment is, you know, making it worth it for the community. But, I mean, that's definitely something that I can come back to the committee about and talk to them about and see, you know, what the feeling is about making that kind of investment. You know, like I said, our main goal is to just do autumn, you know, so, yeah.
Which you... So, let's say this. We have one more council meeting before October begins, and obviously, we'll approve something.
Right.
But could you just relay the sentiment that we think that...
Yeah, absolutely.
...all day, every day might be a little bit much, and see if you can come up with a truncated schedule...
Yeah, for sure.
...that would still reflect what you're doing. Maybe it's weekends, maybe what...
Okay.
Something like that. But just come back in two weeks, and then we'll give an approval.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other points?
I might cut it off a little before 10:00 p.m., just because we do have people that live down on the square. So, you might consider, like, pulling it, you know, at or around dinnertime. Just a thought for the people that live upstairs down there.
What's the schedule for the Christmas music? When does it cease?
It doesn't.
Time-wise?
Yeah. It goes all night long on the square?
If you ask the folks that live on the square, it doesn't.
What is it scheduled to go?
I don't know.
We don't approve it annually, so it's... We have the same schedule with that as we have with this.
It's... I mean, it is probably a month, more than a month long.
It is. It's the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Probably is 24/7.
Well, but it's right how late at night, that's what the question was.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that... Any other questions regarding consent agenda items? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
No, I was gonna say, do we need to table the park...
The park use permit?
Before we do this approval?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry, yeah, we'll...
So, amend the motion to table the park use permit.
Okay. And then a second by Rasmussen.
The second.
All right. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. So, next we'll move to our public forum and appearances. And the first is a complaint about tree branches. Maxine, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Since you all already have this, I thought I would just mostly, first of all, ask, do any of you have any knowledge or experience about this based on your many years of living here in Fairfield?
Knowledge of, specifically, whether it's... Who's responsibility a tree is to...
It's picking up twigs on somebody else's property if the tree originates on your property.
Okay.
My practice is... You asked us, so I'm gonna tell you. My practice is if it's in my yard, I take care of it.
That's exactly what I do. But this, the information that was submitted with this tells you that my neighbor, the Staffords, expect me to come on their property and pick up twigs that fall on their property. There's a tree at my corner, and there's a tree kind of in the middle of our landline that, you know, when storms pass through, the wind pass through, and things like that, things fall on your property. But they expect me to come and pick them up, and I've never heard of such nonsense. And I'm trying to find out where it comes from.
You don't have to. Just tell them you're not gonna do it.
On July 2nd, she put these whole stacks of twigs on my property. They're still there.
Is this the same neighbor that you have an ongoing dispute over their porch light?
Civil litigation is...
And you have civil litigation against them?
So, she's not supposed to be talking to me, and I'm not supposed to be talking to her. But...
And you're... So, you want us to get in the middle of that?
I'm trying to get information from you all as to whether you've ever heard of this. Does it have any basis in any codes? I understand there's no Fairfield ordinances, but, you know, where does it come from? Is there any leg for them to be standing on? And who's gonna help me, you know, get rid of this since I'm not supposed to be talking to them? Is Mr. Morrissey here?
Wait.
Hi. First of all, do any of you have any input? Any knowledge?
I would have to take the same approach Doug does. When I have sticks in my yard, I pick them up. And I do have a branch that overhangs my neighbor, and because she's an older widow, I try very hard to pick them up, but she's never come knock on my door and asked me to pick them up.
Right. And you should be aware that if you're... Does your tree overhang the property line?
Yes, sir.
Well, then, they can cut that portion that overhangs the property line off if they want to.
The entire tree?
No. I said the portion that overhangs. They can cut it off if they want to.
Both of these trees?
Your trees shouldn't be overhanging the property line.
The trees are right on the property line.
Right.
The trunks are right...
They belong to somebody, whoever...
They start on my side.
Right. But what I was trying to tell you is that the portion that overhangs the property line, they can cut that off if they want to, because you're not supposed to overhang your neighbor's property line with a tree. Now, most people don't care. Like, my neighbor had a tree going, a branch going out. He came over, and we cut it off, and it's no big deal. But I'm just telling you that if you have a tree that overhangs the property line, they can cut it off if they want to.
That would be taking off the whole side of two trees.
It's just rules, or, you know?
Where does that... Where's that side?
John could probably address that more thoroughly, but that's my understanding is that if it overhangs the property line, you're not allowed to do that.
If that tree were to fall and damage the other property, you'd still be liable for that.
Right.
Yes, I understand. Big things, yeah.
If it's anything that's falling into their yard, technically, you'd be responsible for it. And there is something in the code that refers to that.
Based on what? Where?
I read it earlier. It's online, that you're responsible to maintain tree shrubs, grass within your property. And if they felt like it's not maintained, you know, if it's dropping or losing, if it's not maintained, you know, if that's what they're feeling, then, you know, that might be the issue. Are the fire chiefs owning all of this comment?
So, Maxine called me over some time ago, and we discussed this issue. And Doug is right, you can trim what is overhanging your property as long as you don't damage or cause disease to the tree. And what I explained to her was, it's kind of a neighborly thing that, you know, branches are going to fall, and, you know, hopefully, you can get along as neighbors to take care of that. But it's actually a civil issue that we, as a city, just can't get involved in. I did tell her that I would check Mr. Morrissey to see if there was more of the law that I did not know of, and I would get back with her if there was and there wasn't. So, that's where we left it.
You didn't get back to me about that.
There wasn't anything to get back to you. There wasn't any other legal law.
Yes, you would have needed to tell me.
That's where we were.
Is Mr. Morrissey the person... Did you go to Karen and Adam Stafford's home the evening of July 15?
Absolutely not.
You did not?
I did not. I saw you said it, and I didn't.
I was asking if you were the person.
Yeah, I was not.
Scott had said he was gonna go, but he later said he didn't go. Only somebody did come there.
Okay.
And I would have appreciated you telling me that, sir.
Counsel, I think the...
My office told you several times.
No.
Stay in on this.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Maxine, we've heard your complaint, and I think you should be a little bit more familiar with the ordinances of the laws governing that particular area, and hopefully, also the advisement that getting along with your neighbor is gonna be the most productive situation to, you know, to take care of this. I know that's a big challenge, and I'm not looking for a response from you, but I'm just saying that, you know, to wrap this up, this is about as far as we can go. There isn't anything that the city can do to intervene at this point. But I hope you understand better what our policy is regarding your responsibility if there are branches or if a limb were to fall on someone else's property.
Big things, yes. I, you know, our insurance would handle, like if the whole tree toppled or something like that.
Right.
But this is twigs, and no, I do not understand the citation.
Okay.
Except to agree with Mr. Flornoy. That's what I do. I take care of what happens on my property.
I think that's what we all do. I think everybody in the room probably does it that way, so...
Excellent.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your appearance, and we wish you the best of luck in getting that solved.
Thank you.
Okay. Next appearance would be Shay Barber.
Counsel, Shay Barber, he's got a copy of my proposal I turned in. Short and sweet. I'm here to discuss the possibility of gifting my house at 50 South 8th Street to the city with the intent of a controlled burn for firefighter training. I've already spoken, Mr. Vaughn, who's on board with the project, as well as Family Video, and six of the surrounding neighbors. Every neighbor I talked to didn't have an issue with it. I didn't get... All the neighbors I talked to, but none have said no. The house is a great enough distance away from other houses. There's no immediate concern of damage to other properties. If approved, it could potentially give a fireman insight enough to save a property or even someone's life. I'm sure you're all aware that Sunday, August 25th, there were four separate fires set in Atumwa in the early morning hours. And so, having a house, having a little training, especially in some of these smaller communities with firefighters that might not have the training, giving them the chance to come and go in, could really help, so...
Okay. Thank you. Fire chief, like your opinion on that?
Shay's?
Do we have any... Yeah, do we have any other legal responsibility for notification beyond what Mr. Barber presented?
I think what he did is a very good step. I think we could probably expand that. We do have a, you know, structure there that has nothing around it, and the road that it is traveled, or A Street is a very lightly-traveled road where we would not be disrupting traffic at all.
Right.
Probably started in an early morning. I know we've got a problem with vacant houses in town. As he said, four houses in Atumwa did catch fire here about a month ago. They were all vacant houses. You know, the more you have, the more potential there is for those things to start happening. We want to take care of dilapidated houses in our town, and the DNR allows us to do two of these a year. These burns within a half mile of each other, and if we could do that at no cost, rather than having to pay for the demolition of that property as a city, that seems like a no-brainer.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
Just a question. He says he's gonna gift it to the city. Does he formally gift it to the city, or is this just a figure of speech? We don't take possession of it, do we?
No.
And we're not... Will you maintain possession of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then, the city would not need to pay the deconstruction fee?
City.
The city wouldn't be paying to demo...
Correct. And then, I think he has... Do you have plans for it after this?
Right. I wanna develop one there, so...
And then, after the burn, like, is there a cleanup?
It's pretty well cleaned up.
It is?
You would have, maybe a truckload, if even that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna fill it in, the foundation in, with either a filter or gravel.
Okay. And you plan to redevelop over it?
Yep.
Okay.
The utilities are also... Have been dug up. There's no gas lines. There's no electric. It's ready to go.
Okay.
And Scott, that tree that overhangs it, that's not a concern?
I cut it down.
Oh, the tree's gone?
This one is gone.
Yep, that one. Okay.
Nope, not a concern.
Not a concern?
We'll go through our normal procedures. Correct me if I'm wrong, capping the water line, sewer, making sure those are all taken care of.
Water's cut off that road?
Yeah, for future development, so it could easily be hooked back up.
Chief, about how long would it be burning?
With that size of a house, if we started at 7:00, 7:30 in the morning, we would be done by... We'd be wrapping up 10:00, 11:00 o'clock.
In the morning.
Yeah. What we do is we would invite other departments, the smaller departments, and we would put some straw in a room, and we would light that and get that room going good, and then do entries, put those out, give those guys that don't see the structure fires like we do extra experience. Once everyone's went through those evolutions, then we would go ahead and get on four sides of it and just let it go.
And we considered this for a house, Josh Lehrby, that property, what street was that on?
South Maple.
South Maple.
That was surrounded by their houses.
We decided not to because of its proximity to the rest properties?
Yep. You had some people that didn't, you know, didn't want it that close to theirs.
And so, this one doesn't have that issue.
This one, you know, is...
I'm far enough away from everybody.
But I guess that's the point, though, is should we be giving final approval now, or is there going to be more outreach to the neighbors?
That was my thought as well.
I've reached out, and I gave you the map with the stars on it.
Yeah.
If you saw that. I've reached out to the closest.
Okay.
The smoke will travel quite a ways, so I think we should expand that radius a bit, get more input.
Yeah, and do we have anything within our code that would give us guidelines for that? It's just, you know, registered letters going out the way that we would notify people about it?
What we would normally do is just do...
Public...
Public hearing, public publications in the paper, on the radio, you know, like probably a month ahead. This is when we're gonna be... This is a Saturday morning. We're gonna do it starting at 7:30, kind of like with the no-burn days. They know what days, they're not gonna have to smell that, and this gives them that month notice that we are gonna be doing this.
Right.
So, if somebody does need to be gone, that gives them a month to, you know, make plans, because we will be, you know, spending three or four hours. And, you know, obviously, if the wind's in the wrong direction or whatever, we're not gonna do it that morning.
Right.
Scott, didn't we do one of these just like a year or two ago?
It got voted down.
That was the one.
Yeah, we talked about it, but it got voted down.
We talked about it, we didn't do it. Okay.
I think it's a great and valuable training opportunity.
It's a unique property.
Yeah, it is.
It does fit the...
This is nothing like the Maple one.
Yes, it's true.
Right, exactly.
Well, counsel, it's up to you. Do you want to wait for any further outreach, or do you want to give permission?
I would make a motion to move forward with it with proper public notification.
I'll second.
Second by Anderson, second by Rasmussen. And the other discussion? And who will take care of that further outreach? Will you, sir?
I can contact some of the other neighbors as well.
Yeah, I think I would.
Be in contact with them, and I could...
Do you have document... The ones you did contact, is it just verbal, or do you have documentation? Or how is that?
I have. I have a voicemail from the manager at Family Video. I have messages from two individuals on Facebook Messenger, and the other ones are just ones I reached out to.
Okay.
Verbally?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions?
Scott, do you have a timeline, like, a month in mind?
Probably mid to late October.
Okay.
Before we get to...
Okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Next council, I've been approached to... Where's my proclamation? I didn't bring it in. Rebecca, would you mind?
Yeah.
It's on my desk, yeah. We have a proclamation for Constitution Week, so we'll come back to that in just a second, and we'll move to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. So, this, Aaron, if you can tell us what this next action will be?
Yeah, the next resolution is considering of approving an amendment to the resolution authorizing issuance of sewer revenue capital notes. Basically, what we're doing is we're extending the SRF notes for the planning and development of our sewer plant. We did those with SRF prior to switching to USDA notes, and the... Those notes actually expired in August, but SRF is willing to let us continue on a zero-interest basis to let us finish the sewer plant and finalize our USDA notes to keep, save the money for interest, so that we don't have to redo that with who's doing the interim financing. I forgot.
Cobank?
Cobank, which would cost us more.
Is there a new deadline on them?
They would actually extend it for three years, so no, we would be plenty good.
Okay. So, then, upon the recommendation of our city administrator to entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, counsel, just stepping back a second here to approving a proclamation for Constitution Week. This is an annual week marking the founding of the country and the Constitution that underpins it, supports it. And this will read, "Whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, it is in its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, I, Edward Malloy, by virtue of the authority vested to me as mayor, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week." So, entertain a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Are you to receive the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm with the Daughters of the American Revolution. I just wanted to say thank you for doing this proclamation.
Next, we'll move to the third and final reading of the ordinance for clarifying signage and street numbering and sign placement in the city of Fairfield. We had a good discussion last time, and I'll ask the counsel at this time if you've received any other public feedback on the ordinance. Okay? I'll open up the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any comments on the third reading for the sign placement ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to pass to the final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next counsel will move to the first reading of an ordinance. It'll be a new ordinance considering our small cell facilities in the city. We will have a public hearing portion to this. I'm going to ask first for the committee to tell us about their discussions and what they're bringing to the, uh, to the committee this evening, to the council this evening.
All right, this is an ordinance that describes the method in which cells, small cells, can be mounted on public property like utility pools or telephone pools, what have you, in the right of way. And, uh, you know, things like the color of the, how they can be mounted, how far they can stick out, the color they have to be, all that sort of thing. Priorities about where the, um, cells could be placed in terms of whether they're next to residents, or in downtown, or in the business department, central town, et cetera. And, uh, that's about it, I guess. I mean, there's a lot of detail in there, but...
Well, this is, Andrew, just to mention that this is essentially in ordinance form the resolution that was passed back in April.
Right, this is the same, uh, document that Cascade adopted. We adopted, we took it from their ordinance and passed a resolution in May, I guess it was, or April.
And didn't we amend that resolution? Like, it started with one distance, and then we changed it?
Yeah, on page seven, there was, um, one number change from 250 to 1,000. We put it back to 250.
250, okay.
But that's unchanged from the resolution that we passed in April.
Okay, so this is just moving the resolution to...
Ordinance form.
Can you tell everyone why that distance was changed?
Which time?
In what you're bringing back right now.
No, we changed it when we did it in resolution form.
Well, no one knows what, well, okay.
Well, we changed it back again, though, that first meeting.
Yeah.
We went back to the original.
Yeah, I'm just saying, would somebody explain that?
Because I think part of it was a miscommunication, part of it, but it was...
Someone in the audience asked that it be changed from 250 to 1,000. Somebody made a motion to do that. Someone seconded it and it got passed.
Right.
Without any discussion or rationale as to why it should be changed.
But it didn't have anything at all to do with the cell units themselves. It was just new poles.
Well, I think there was certainly a rationale.
It wasn't expressed at the time of that vote.
There was, it was. I think it was pretty clear that people were concerned about how close proximity the cells would be, um, you know, within neighborhoods and cities, so...
But...
And I understand your deliberations were based on the fact that technically it wouldn't work, and it wouldn't likely be supported by law, but there was a rationale that night.
And that section in there actually didn't even refer to the cells themselves, just new, were new poles.
New poles could be...
Whether or not they had a cell on them.
Right.
So it, they could have still put cells 250 feet apart.
Right.
The rationale in the ordinance is no closer than 250 feet to prevent clutter and distraction for drivers. That's the rationale in the ordinance. So that's why the...
Okay.
Poles placed by the installer can be no closer than 250 feet from each other.
Okay.
And in the right of way? Correct?
Yes.
On public property, okay.
It's on page seven here. Have to go back and look at it.
So, yeah, just to, just also to kind of recap, um, when we first put that resolution in place, it was because all cities across the country faced a deadline to have some policy in place that could be referred to if a wireless company approached your community about putting in a new antenna system to support 5G. If you did not have it at that time in place, then you could not go backwards and amend any laws to, um, basically obstruct what it is that that company had intended to develop in the community. So we had to put something in place very quickly. This is, you know, an opportunity for us to put it in ordinance form and open this up to the public for comment. So we, as we said that evening, many of you were here. We did not take public comment at that time. We'll take public comment tonight. And we'll, we'll open the public hearing, and then just ask that if you do wish to speak to the council, that we'll have a three-minute limit. Aaron will kind of keep time on that and just put his hand up, stop. If someone else is making the same point that you're making, and you know you don't feel you need to reinforce that again, then it'll help us with the expediency, but we certainly can hear from everyone. I will just mention before, also, we talked a little bit about this that evening, and that is that, you know, we are, as a government, as a local government, are prohibited by FCC law and by Iowa state law from really inhibiting this development on a wholesale basis. They've really limited that. There is a, you know, a national priority for this. And, um, you know, they've kind of made it clear by having regulation and law that sort of supports that. There, there has been a protest by the U.S. Council of Mayors and other government organizations, mostly based on the fact that they're basically taking away our local control and our ability to say what we want or where we want it placed, or don't want it placed. So we are hamstrung in that way. There are two states that I'm aware of where their state legislatures have overridden that and allowed for cities to have a little bit more input, California and Washington State. Iowa does not. The other thing that, uh, you know, is, I know that Aaron has taken phone calls about the issue, and we have not received any applications from any of the providers that would eventually get into this technology, fortunately at this time, so we don't have anything immediate. From my research, I can see that Verizon and AT&amp;T, I think Verizon has four cities right now where they've, they've had somewhat of a rollout, and they have probably another dozen or so planned, and AT&amp;T is about the same number. Those are all larger cities. I don't know if there's an imminent rollout in smaller areas that's going to come anytime soon. Anyway, not expecting that. And I've read some financial journals that basically say that Wall Street investment banks are really not behind this technology at this point, and aren't really putting money into rolling it out. So I don't think we have anything immediate to be concerned about, but if we can put together the, a policy that will support what it is that we hope we can create here, we will. So at this time, we'll open up for comment for, from the public comment, and we'll time our three minutes. Yes? Can we just state your name and address?
My name's Patrick Osold.
If you're from the city of Fairfield also, the people outside of Fairfield is not a public comment session for, outside of the...
I live in Fairfield.
Yes?
202 North Thursday. My name is Patrick Osold, and, um, I do wanna thank the city and the committee for what I think is a pretty well-written ordinance. I actually read it. And, um, I understand, Ed, thank you for clarifying the city's position in terms of what you face in federal and state prohibitions on local control. I, I really just have a question for you. How much, a petition's going around right now? How much of a ruckus, or how many people would have to show up and say, you know, we really don't want this, before it might affect the city being willing to say to an incoming provider of 5G, you know, there's a lot of local opposition to this? Could any of you mention a number, or do you think that's, that has any hope at all of being an effective tactic?
What we, you know, Patrick, I've thought about this a lot. What we don't, what we do know is the amount of, of community concern there is. What we don't know at this point is whether there's another side. We don't know whether there are gamers or whomever out there that are waiting for their 5G. I don't think that there are, and I've talked with both of our internet providers, and they say that they're gonna, what they're providing right now will be more computing power than 5G could provide anyway. So I don't know that the demand is going to be there, but I don't know the answer to that. So it might be the other side. The other thing is, you know, these regulations from the FCC and the state are constructed with, you know, with legal penalties for the city also. We would get into some sort of a protected legal battle in denying this, and is it something that we would win? We don't know. So I think those are the two areas that...
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, um...
But, well, but this ordinance doesn't give permission for anybody to do anything except it tells people if they had permission to hang cell towers, how they have to do it. That's what this ordinance does.
Right.
So, you know, if someone were to apply to put up a small cells in this city, then, then the issue of whether we allow it or not comes up.
Right.
This ordinance doesn't allow anybody to do anything except it tells them how they have to hang the towers.
Well, and, right, but this may be the only opportunity that concerned public citizens members will have, just to make the point that, you know, thanks very much for a well-crafted ordinance, we just don't want it in the first place.
But, Pat?
Yeah.
Having or not having this ordinance doesn't help you not or not have 5G or 6G, or whatever it might be?
No, I understand. But I guess the question is, is, I think most of us and all of us get, the law is what it is. We do, I personally, I do not want to see the city get dragged into a nasty legal battle that it probably isn't going to win. That said, I would respectfully ask that as this conversation moves forward, if significant opposition from the public starts showing up, please consider it. And, you know, if and, if and when...
Look, and we will do what we can. The city took the leadership in the smart meters with Alliant. I know it's been taken over by, you know, local organizations, but the city took the leadership in that position and got Alliant to the table with a proposal, a counterproposal to have an opt-out. Now, that's been going through a lot of refinements, but we've done that. We've also demonstrated that with, um, radio read meters for our, our water. We've, we've essentially, you know, created a open opt-out program for everyone. So we've demonstrated that we're concerned that we will respond to those things. What we can do in this arena at this point, I just don't know.
Yeah, okay.
That's the difference. I mean, if we could be talking with Verizon and AT&amp;T and Sprint and everybody right now, I know I would be personally lobbying them, the way I did with Alliant, not to come to this community. But I'm not sure that we're gonna get the opportunity because of the way it's set up.
Right. And with all of that understood, if the opportunity arises for the city to step up to the plate, as you have done in those other two instances, and for which I thank you, I think a lot of other people do too, Ed, really, please take that opportunity.
Sure.
And let them know that, you know, a lot of people have these concerns.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Patrick.
Thank you.
Next.
Yes, my name is Dory Hearn. I'm a resident of Fairfield. And I actually printed out some, a document from the Naval Medical Research Institute. This document was written in the 1970s, and I printed out some pages of it. I have one copy of the entire document. And it lists the harmful effects of radiation. And people are already experiencing this in our lives now, just with the amount of Wi-Fi that we have everywhere we go. So there's a petition going around that what we would like to see, and there's, uh, there's been a summit called the 5G Summit online, and experts from all over the world have been speaking. And one of them's name is Timothy Schoechle, S-C-H-O-E-C-H-L-E. He's a PhD from the University of Colorado and an expert in this field. And he said, there's no need for 5G. There's no need for any of this. That fiber optic cable, which I remember hearing about years ago, is better, is more cost-effective, and it's completely safe.
And we already have it.
So, and it being Constitution Week, it's really, the idea that the FCC can pass such a law, uh, or the state of Iowa that prevents us from saying that we don't want this in our community is just like an elephant in the room. And, um, we, you know, the Constitution gives us the right to say what we want or what we don't want, the right to privacy, the right to safety, the right to health for our bodies, our children's bodies, and, um, there's a mayoral candidate in the city of Houston running on a platform to put a moratorium on 5G. And, um, I'm gonna pass out this document. I'm sorry, I didn't print out enough for everybody. I forgot how many of you there were.
We can, that's okay. We can have it copied for everyone if you wanted to give us the copies you have, and then Rebecca can make sure that everybody gets. I'll just pass one there.
Let me give it to him, please.
Great. Thank you.
I almost submit the petition here, but, sorry. So there's all the evidence that the Naval Research Center found in the 1970s researching this technology as a weapons system. And how it got into our common usage in our society is just another big elephant in the room. But along with that, you know, that's from the 1970s. The California Brain Tumor Association website has six months' worth of reading on the correlation between wireless...
Three minutes.
Three minutes is up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. We're having your research copied, so appreciate that. Next.
Hi, my name is Anil Maheshwari. I'm from Weydig City. Would that count in Fairfield?
Um, yeah, it's mostly comments for Fairfield at this point. Thank you. Someone else like to address counsel? Yes?
Ellen Sand, and I live in Fairfield, and I just want to say that I am opposed to 5G. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I have not been listening to the 5G Summit, but I did get an email recently, which I can forward on to you. Can you hear?
Name?
Lisa, sorry, Lisa Ashelman in Fairfield. And it, the headline was saying that, that actually the local does have power to make changes and the, um, the government, the, it's, it's not true what, where the local governments are being told. And also, there's been a, quite a move to have many people write their local elected officials, and when enough people are doing that, actually, the local areas are stopping it. That's my understanding.
Well, my understanding is that it's the state legislatures that are being written. There are a number of state legislatures now that are considering creating policy that would allow for that local control. So, um, you know, Iowa has had in place its, you know, that, blocking that local control for new technologies coming into communities for about five or six years now. So that's what needs to be overturned for us to do anything. There is just, we're really handcuffed in that regard.
Okay, so, but even so, and since I haven't read this character, this email, I'm, if you don't mind, I'm gonna send it to you all and see if there's anything new. And if anyone else wants that, let me know, and I'll email it to anyone else as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello, I'm John Andrews, and I lived in Fairfield for 40 years now. And, um, I'm very concerned about the 5G because the FCC is a captured government organization. It's not being run for the good of the people. It's being run for huge business interests. And they don't care, there's no, there's no research on the safety or health effects of 5G. And so this is all being just pushed forward for money, for big money. You know, they think there's 15 and a half trillion dollars here that they, and they wanna get everybody on board, that's big investors to go into it. So that's not... And the second issue is, there is a constitution where the state and the federal government is supposed to, the state and the federal government are supposed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people. But what happened to that? You know, this is the same problem we have with the vaccine agenda, that those vaccines are not well-researched anymore either. In fact, the CDC is in bed with the vaccine makers. And, you know, Robert F. Kennedy had a big article on that. So we're in a unique times where we're being railroaded by huge financial interests who have no concern about health of the, of the population. And that violates the Constitution, as far as I know. I'm, you know, I'm just, we really need a good constitutional lawyer to look at this and, you know, see where the challenges should be, because it's, it's not right. It's obviously not right. And astronauts that go off into space to the space station, they come back in six months or so, and they're so weak, and so, even though they do exercises up there all the time, because they're exposed to the radiation about our space, well, that radiation isn't that much different from 5G. High 5G is a very high-frequency radiation. So there's all these issues, and we need more people to somehow get into it and research it and give us more in-depth. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, John, appreciate your comments. Someone else? Any other public comment?
I have a question.
Yes?
Who would we write to or telephone?
State legislature?
Yeah.
That would be Representative Jeff Shipley and State Senator Marionette Miller Meeks from Otumwa. But you can find them online. I think if you just look for the, this district area, you'll find their names. Yeah. You had a question?
Yes, it seems that the city should be able to resist that law on constitutional ground. If the state of Iowa passed a law that is unconstitutional, removing local controls...
So after our attorney had his hand up, I'll ask him to comment on that.
Yes, constitutional grounds. Everybody's got a right to come in here and have their say. That's one constitutional item. Constitutional standards as far as what the FTC deals with, and what both your state legislature and Congress and the FCC deal with, has another constitutional provision that doesn't get talked about much, but it's the Commerce Clause. And basically, the city with its power, and even the state with its power, doesn't have the right to tell a technology business that it... the right to tell a technology business that it can't attempt to provide this service. They can do, you can do a lot of things. For instance, sometimes try zoning or they try requiring that the areas where this service is provided, put their equipment in different containers or packages or underground and so forth. Those get challenged. They get challenged as subtle ways of trying to defeat the delivery of the service. And what the constitutional right that the technology companies hammer on in their challenges on constitutional grounds under the Commerce Clause are that you can't prevent us from attempting to provide this service. It's the same right everybody's had to go out and try to earn a living or to go out and try to excel in a business that's been there ever since our country began. But that doesn't mean they've always got a winner and that doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of things that municipalities and the states do get upheld on as far as ways to regulate in some way. Everything that's in this ordinance that we're passing in some way is a limiter or regulatory part of what towns can do. So, the council, to the extent they can do something, will, I think, stick with what this ordinance that's held up in several other towns around the state has in it, but we can't say no. We can't on our face tell the technology company that we're in the position to say we will not allow any 5G in our community. That's my opinion anyway, as your city attorney. But we can do enough things in the process of limiting and regulating and so forth that a company might not be particularly attracted to providing the service here. We can also, as far as what we look at when they come in and they say, "We are going to do this," we've got a right to continue to ask the questions. We've got a permit process. We've got applications that people that come to our town and want to do things tell us about. And we've had these kinds of hearings before. So, that's right of assembly, which is another constitutional right. You can come and see what they've got to say about what can and can't be done. But the council itself, I believe, is doing as much as they can within what they're limited to staying constitutional to review this. The guidelines that are now being made into an ordinance were discussed, I think we were over here for three, four hours when we had the discussion back in mid-April to meet our deadline and pass that resolution. It was pretty fully discussed then. So, we know that you're researching science. We know that there's lots of things that people aren't sure about and we're not saying that anybody here is pro or con on all of the science in this, but the council's doing what it can within its limitations. We'll try to show them as much as we can about the doors that are open to take another step or put another piece of definition into this, but as I say, it's a science that's still being researched. And so, hopefully you feel like you've had a chance to say your piece, but as far as what the Commerce can do in respecting the other parts of the Constitution, at some point, I might have to tell them, "Well, you go too far that direction, you're going to get challenged immediately on a violation of Commerce Clause." So, that is a part of the Constitution you don't hear talked about very much here and it's very much a pro-business part of the US Constitution, but it's been there just as long as the other parts of the US Constitution.
Okay. Well, thank you, John. Okay. Yeah, I, it, actually, thinking about it, you know, this is all ultimately going to be market-based, so I would petition your providers not to bring the service to Fairfield is, you know, maybe where I would start. So, that if they want to make the investment, they make it an investment in a more willing place where they're going to have a market. If they know that they're not going to have a market here, they may not come. But, any other comments? Yep, you have one last question and then, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to mention that there's like the document that I submitted, you don't see any of this. If you Google anything about 5G, none of this comes up. So, not only is the FCC captured, the mainstream media is also captured by the same.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that and we'll, we'll read this and I've seen this research online as well, so you may have to dig a little bit more, but a lot of that is out there. A lot of the concerns are out there. Okay? So, we'll close the public hearing at this time and then ask if the council, I'd like to pass this from the first to the second reading.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you and thank you for your comments this evening.
Thanks, John.
Next, we'll move to my mayor's report. I have two appointments to make to the Carnegie Museum Board. These are replacing folks that are no longer on the board. One would be Nikki Gilchrist and the other would be Barb Sirin to serve on the Carnegie Museum Board. So, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Those appointments moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And I just want to report, council, that we were, you recall, I reported that we did receive a redesignation from the Iowa Great Places, which basically opened up our opportunity to apply for grant support for some of our community-based projects that, that kind of support our great places. And our application focused mostly on our downtown, so the pre-application, which was submitted in early August, included some projects in the downtown, art-based projects, alley murals, alley lighting, wayfinding signage and the west entrance sign being moved in a little bit closer to town as a project. And we received a review, positive feedback on our alley projects and on the west entry sign, so we're going to be making application before November 1st for those two projects. Today, there was an awards ceremony and also a mini-conference on Iowa Great Places that Terry Baker and I attended in Perry, Iowa. And again, we got some positive feedback and we'll be producing some grants and some grant support for that. Funding is always limited for these types of project. It comes through the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs. So, the one thing I might ask is that as council members, you talk to our local representatives to support that in the state budget so that there are grant dollars available. Obviously, there is always matching support from the local communities and our communities have always been very good about that, so we're hoping that we can get some good projects going for next spring and summer. That concludes my report. I don't see any committee reports. Is there a city administrator report?
Just a couple of things. I did get a quote back to put some outlets here in the council chambers for charging iPads, stuff like that. It's a minimal cost to have that done. We'll, we'll add that to our maintenance costs out of the city office building fund to do that. We've got to look at some microphone stuff that Jason needs to get me some quotes on yet for that, for the microphones, but working a little bit on that to continue with our remodel here. Also had a meeting over in Henry County with the ambulance folks over there. Not a lot of movement, but we will have another closed, closed meeting with our ambulance board here in Jefferson County later this month. Those are the two big tickets, I guess, at this point.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that. If there is any other business for the council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.